Counselor.
Great, let's start here. And before we get into business, I did have something to say. This is Debbie Edwards to commemorate her last meeting. She's moving away, but we want to thank her for her service. She did a wonderful time in the brief period she was here. It wasn't long enough. You know, when I think of Debbie, a couple of things stand out that I think are really valuable for planning board members, but just in general. Her integrity, I was always impressed by. Her tireless effort to understand all the details of each application. And her opinions were always guided by a strong desire to do what is fair for all the parties. And that do the right thing attitude made her an invaluable member of this board. And we want to really, we appreciate your service and thank you for your contribution. We're going to start tonight with the Fowler Farm application. Comments?
It's John Bennett and Mr. Fowler is with me. I was hoping that we would have a sketch plan approval this evening. The board should each have copies of, I'm sorry. The board should each have copies of the resolution which I circulated to you earlier.
Yeah, I got them. Did you want to say anything else? Otherwise, we're going to go right, we're going to move right along here.
No, I just think it's the thing to do. You've approved the January map, subject to final and preliminary approval, which is what the law says.
Perfect. So we opened the hearing last meeting so we could hear from the Farm Bureau. I'd like to make two motions here. First motion is to close the public hearing. Second? Thank you all in favor. Aye. And then I'd make, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the site map, approving the sketch plan based on the resolution that is circulated to the board members. Second?
Second.
And Bill, thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And you can execute.
You can execute.
Yeah. I'll sign this one. We can just pass it down. Okay.
Yeah, you've got to sign a map in your old age.
You know, two minutes on that's the fastest we've ever had a conversation on this. So I, you know. Yes, please. Just initially. So, thank you. Next on the agenda tonight is 51 Hill Streets. And 43 Hill Street. We'll do both.
Of 43. So, the last we were here, I think we reviewed the updated site plan. And the main point of consideration was vehicular cross-access. Desired vehicular cross-access between 71 and 43. There is some existing cut. And there was a request for us to convene outside of this meeting and talk to the owners of 71. And we've done that. Everybody's assembled here. In talking through it, we kind of considered the permutations of what the impacts would be of cross-access in different places. And the main concerns that percolated from both sides were about pedestrian safety. Basically, as we slided north and south along the east property line or the west property line of 43 east of 71, depending on where it is, it's more or less impactful to pedestrians walking through the parking lots of one or the other building. We actually also kind of started to talk more about what the impact of that open cross-access would be completely, right? And right now, there's kind of a couple of points of entry into the lot of the theater. And also, I think there's a, there's kind of a parking lot condition that's going to come around like this. So, what we realized, of course, is that what this is going to encourage is if there's people stopped at the light here, there's going to be a bunch of traffic that decides to drive through both sites, basically making like a road through the lots. And because of that, there's going to be a bunch of traffic in these parking lots that's not there for either property, right? This property's got hotel guests. This property's got movies. They're both private lots. It's not a municipal parking lot in either case. And we're basically making a road through them. So, thought that, you know, the comprehensive master plan talks about how cross-access is a good idea, but mostly in regards to municipal lots. And also, I think it has to do with trying to eliminate curb cuts and people popping in and out of different retail establishments, right? So if you have your groceries, you can easily get to the hardware store or something like that. But in this case, it didn't seem like people are going to get in their car if they're staying at the hotel and drive over to the theater to watch a movie. And there's no reason really for the patrons of the movie theater to go into the hotel parking lot. All it's really going to do is cause a whole bunch of traffic to go through here. And since we're going to have this pocket park back here, and we've got handicap spots here, and a bunch of people kind of like funneling down out of the parking lot into the movie theater, pedestrians, I mean, they're basically going to have a bunch of traffic, maybe trucks, trailers, all kinds of stuff, driving through here. We can try to control that with speed bumps and so forth, but it seems to go against part of the comprehensive master plan, which talks about improving the downtown and arts district for pedestrians and cyclists. We're putting in bicycles and stuff like that. Similarly, for 71, they're going to have people going through their lot, crossing, you know, crossing through here that are just going to be driving through the pedestrians that they have that are meant to park there. So, I mean, the net result of all that conversation is ideally, for both of these properties, it would be better and safer not to have cross-access. That's the conclusion that we came to when we were trying to work on the correct point. So, that said, I guess we're interested in your perspective if you might agree with that, or if you think that it is important to have kind of a supplemental road for traffic to cut through and avoid the light.
Any comments, board members?
Sorry, would you eliminate access on the left side of the shaded area as well?
Um, oh, sorry. I don't have a big plan of both of these, but I can show you ours. We're not, we're not talking about getting rid of any of the access that currently exists there.
Right, okay.
Except, there is one point where the two lots are connected, but it's been chained for decades.
See that again? What was your point?
Just, no, I'm, there, we do, we would like to eliminate the connection between the two existing parking lots. It has had a chain across it for about a decade.
Right.
Yep.
Previously requirement of this board that cross-access being done, I think, at the request of the fire marshal for emergency access between the properties.
Well, I personally have used that access with my car off and on for approximately 40 years since the Veridian Way went in and the buildings. I used it a lot to go to the building department.
Sure.
When it was, when John Foster was working there for a while. I used it an awful lot. And there were vendors up above. I was tracking the demise of the radio station that was there on breath support for having been taken from the college when it went under in 'oh six or seven. And so, it was, it was a great way to go, but it absolutely, if it had that, with the issues that we now face on Hill Street, it's really unwise to open it up for vehicle, for random vehicles. It's totally unsound. And as someone whose residence is west of that place, it'll make every, it'll mean, it'll be at least 40 minutes from the movie theater to the blinking light where my house is every evening. And it's a ghastly situation on Hill Street. So, anything that increases traffic cutting through Hill Street. And we've done a little bit to make the intersection better outside of the Southampton Inn. That's probably going to be acceptable over time. Every, oh, every change has got problems, but that'll be acceptable over time.
So, you do want a road through these properties?
I don't want a road.
You do not?
I think a road through the properties to connect them to is a bad idea for the village.
We agree.
Just personal opinion, it's, but I, it's only 40 years of using it. That's bad.
Yeah, I mean, because we're going to have a bunch of, hopefully, kids and families in this park. We're going to have people like streaming in and out of here. And we're talking about, I mean, right now, it's a point of access here. I think that as we look at it, it's somewhere in here, but it definitely becomes unsafe, more unsafe, the more traffic comes through here, right? Because they're really going to cut through here up and through. That's why we'd like to eliminate it. So that people that are coming to the theater come in either here or here and leave in the same fashion. And people that are using 71 do the same thing. There's already curb cut for them. They come in on Veridian Way and navigate through traffic that way. And I think, I mean, if it's beneficial, we can show you those plans. I don't think that you've seen them yet. But we've been looking at them because of the dialogue we've been having.
Plans to close that cross-access?
No, the plans for 71.
Yep.
If it's better.
Okay. Just one minute. Questions, comments? Any?
Does the fire marshal have something to say?
Yeah, that was my question too. The fire marshal wants cross-access?
If this, that concept hasn't been reviewed, can the previous version of 71, this board have conditioned it on providing that?
Cross-access.
Okay. I mean, and I can understand why that might be important, maybe in a fire situation. But it's potentially detrimental to a lot of other people.
I mean, I don't see anything. I could look and research as to if it could be let in its current configuration, but only for emergency uses. You could put a plastic chain across it so that if a fire apparatus does have to go through, it wouldn't be open to the public in general, though. If that's something that we do need to explore.
I mean, the other thing I'll say is if we don't have it, we get more parking spots on both sides, which some people like.
Questions, comments? Do you have any?
Just when you were, the first map you were showing was a little bit confusing.
Yeah, sorry.
You're drawing, it almost looked like you're drawing through a building or something. I was like...
Yeah, my apologies. This is, this is a, I'll try to describe it better. This is just, this is the only drawing I have of all of it with the roads. But the theater is basically here.
Right.
Right? This is 51. This is where we want to put that pocket park. And then this is the parking lot behind 43. Right now, there's, there's, there's that access here to Hill Street and access through here to Windmill Lane.
Did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I represent the owners to the west, as you know. My name is John Bennett. So, candidly, when the client first came to me, I said, "Ah, you know, cross-access is something that is more and more..." It's on the box. So, but I've been thinking about this. And from a site condition point of view, not only does it make no sense at all, it raises liability issues, and it doesn't really do what the courts talk about in the reason for providing cross-access. Because why do you provide cross-access? And here's the granddaddy case. It's Holmes versus Planning Board of Town of Newcastle, which is a second department case going back to 1980. And it's an interesting case because it's one of the rare cases where they actually put a map in the case. That's, they're really trying to demonstrate to the reader how these things should work. But in what was driving the cross-access in Holmes versus Planning Board, it was a, it was a typical strip mall. And every unit had a curb cut. So, the whole idea with Holmes' case was to close up some of the curb cuts so you wouldn't have those point of inflections between oncoming traffic and multiple curb cuts. That's not what we have here. You're not going to be closing up any curb cuts. There'll be in and out to the hotel and in and out to the, to the, to the movie theater. I don't know exactly how that's going to handle, because in the old days, you'd go, when the movie was starting, you'd go up the hill and all the traffic went to the north. And then when the movie got out, it'd all go down to the south. And there was sort of an unwritten law. But however are you going to handle that? But this is not a typical cross-access scheme, set of facts. It, I'm going to show you some other cross-access points that make sense on properties that I've worked on in the town. But what's pivotal about those is that you're not encouraging through traffic through parking lots. That's, that's a disaster. It's a liability issue. It doesn't make any sense from a planning point of view. We want to talk about emergency vehicle access, even though I don't think we need it, because we vetted these plans with the fire marshal for our, our site plan. And I'm going to have John Rose talk a little bit about that, because I think it's going to be very informative for you. But, but, but this is not something where you want to encourage any sort of pass-through. What's going to happen? You're going to have people, it's going to say, "Okay, that light, that right-hand turn at the intersection of Windmill and Hill, oh God, there's 10 cars backed up there. I'm just going to go up Macarosa through the movie theater and come out at Hill Street at the, at the hotel." It just doesn't make any sense, putting a throughway through a parking, a series of parking lots. Let's, let me tell you, if you'll just indulge me a little bit. What I did do is I went out and took some examples of when cross-access does make sense, some proper projects that I've been involved in to a certain degree. And the first thing I want to show you is, oops, sorry. One that makes an awful lot of sense, because what it does is it provides for cross-access, but it takes the, takes the, it isolates the cross-access from any parking. And that's, they're calling it hospital for special security. It's the Flying Point Road. If you, if you make a, if you're heading out on Hampton Road and you make a right at Flying Point Road, you're just past the old Buick, the Glendon Cadillac place. You make a right there. Not, not so far down to the south to the left, there is a true cross-access commonsensical scheme there. And I have some photographs of it for the board's consideration. And, and what that does is you, you make a left, you drive into that cross-access point. And then the cross-access doesn't interface at all with any parking. So, you can get from, you can get from, you can get from the cross-access point at Flying Point all the way to the back of what I'll call, and I'm really dating myself, the Starlane's bowling alley building, which was Pier One Imports for years. And at no point do you come into contact whatsoever with a parking lot. And that, that makes a lot of sense. That's the way cross-access is supposed to... Billy, do you think we can do that? I just, no, we can't do it? I just want to, I drove my, I drove my vehicle the other day. It's not working? Somebody else can turn it up for us? It was working before? Can we download it to, can we try? Maybe somebody, could the audio visual people put it in? What it shows you is how you can drive unimpeded from Flying Point Road all the way to the southerly end, all along the south of those buildings, to the, to the east. But at no point do you come into contact with a parking lot. And that, that, so that makes sense. Then there's another example, which I can show you only, only in the part that I was, I was, give me this if you, if you, if you would for a second. Behind the Lexus in Southampton, and I have some multiple copies, copies for you. There is a 50-foot wide cross-access in the back of that. So, I have a series, I have the aerial photographs of the area, and I also have the site plan in the back where you can see the cross-access, which is the extreme northerly portion of the property. It runs along the spine of all those properties to the back. And again, you have a situation where cross-access has been provided by the planning board, but nowhere does it come into contact with established or potential parking lots. You're creating a significant, significant traffic and liability issue. You're intermixing vehicles with pedestrian uses. And, you know, God willing, it's going to be a very, very, very successful project there at the movie theater. Going to be a lot of pedestrian access. Why would you create a bypass for people to try to bypass the light, making the right-hand turn on, off of Windmill Lane to Hilda Street? It's going to be chaos and going to go nowhere. And it creates significant safety issues. I do also want to add that when the, when the village approved the application, which we're going back to amend from the, from the, for the zone change, they didn't mandate cross-access. They said, "Explore it." So, there's no mandate from the, there's no mandate from the, from the trustees to have cross-access. They said, "Explore it." We've done a very, very deep dive. They're very, very cooperative, and I, and I thank the owners of the Hill Street project for their cooperation on this. We've looked at this. It simply makes no sense. And now you have the benefit of seeing how these two, well, actually, maybe three properties are going to be developed. And it, it, all the contrary indications are there as for the, as for the, any, providing any cross-access. Cross-access does work sometimes when you cut down on the number of curb cuts, but that's not going to happen here. And all you're going to do is encourage people to find a way around when they should be being marshaled through proper traffic control devices. John, just want to, for the, for the benefit of Alex, particularly concerned about emergency vehicle access, which is this totally separate thing.
So, Alan, I'll tell you, 40 years ago, I was one of the ones that was cutting through.
He was quite reasonable.
I was one of the ones that was cutting through 40 years ago.
He was quite useful.
So, one of the first things we did, and I know we're not here to really talk about the nuts and bolts of this, so I won't get into that. But one of the first things we did when we started about looking at the design of this is go meet with the fire marshal. He's always available. And we talked about, well, how are we going to fight a fire in this? Clearly, what was important to him. We talked about cars and the road. But he said to us that, and it wasn't this exact plan, but the concept is the same. If we make this area the road between the building and the parking lot, which is normally 24 feet wide, if you make it 26 foot wide and make all these turns a certain diameter, then one fights the fire this way and around and does not rely on any cross easements. Now, he hasn't had this latest plan, and I'm sure he'll have plenty to say.
It doesn't differ significantly. The turning radiuses are the same. The length of the building is actually the same.
That is exactly.
And by the way, this is, I'm sorry to step on it, but this is the, this is the site plan before the trustees. To amend the, to amend the zoning, they're granting this. One of the big differences is this has, instead of four workforce housing units, it has eight. 20%.
And in this picture here, is the building, this application, the movie theater is right here, if you have an idea of where this is.
Wait, you're currently showing cross-access on this?
No.
No.
Well, no. This was a proposed, this was a proposed one that we felt was good, but didn't work with the applicant's plan at all. And then what it did is it forced us to look at the inappropriateness of cross-access in this particular setup here. You're not going to reduce the number of curb cuts. You're going to encourage people to sidestep a traffic control device. It has all the good traffic calming concerns that you oftentimes suggest cross-access. It's really the opposite of what they have going here. You have people hunting for some way around the established traffic control in the village. And you shouldn't encourage that. I mean, I've been very, most of the time, when we're up on the highway or something like that, the board will ask for cross-access, and my clients will rumble, and I'll say, "Ah, there's enough law there to allow it to happen." But it's, it's always because the intent is to calm traffic. That's not what's going to happen. Perhaps I could just add that this here is the park that you're talking about.
Right.
Which is right here.
Yep.
So, the further that works for us, where my pencil is, it doesn't work very well. And if you start to go down this way and create it, it's going right into the center of our building. So, there is pedestrian traffic. Whenever you're designing a parking lot, number one thing is safety for pedestrians. Number two is traffic flow and then water drainage. Not anywhere along here is, is just dangerous.
Well, that's a question that I had, because I agree that I think the public safety and pedestrian use are paramount here. And I didn't see the paths that the public would walk to get from the parking lot to the movie theater. So, that's all in there. We do have the cross-flow from the, from pedestrians walking and using everything, right?
That we're talking about. I think what we'd like to do is, both of our plans, because we thought we'd have to do vehicular cross-access, show locations for that. But we'd like to both get rid of the vehicular cross-access and explore how best to do.
Do you have the pedestrians set out on you, the one you were showing us or whatever? Where are you thinking now?
We do, but I think it could, I think it could be better.
Yeah.
And I think that...
Because that should have a lot of pedestrian ease and flow, so everyone can go everywhere and not be in harm's way with the traffic.
Yeah, exactly.
It makes a lot of sense, but I haven't seen much of those paths. I know you're changing your designs, but...
Yeah, so, this is how, it kind of overlays. This is a different location for the vehicular cross-access, which again, we prefer to eliminate. This is where there's existing pedestrian cross-access, but I think it could be substantially improved. So, I think, you know...
And does that run all the way to the cafe on the other side and everything else? Or is it more of a...
Yeah, this goes into the pocket park for 51. This is, sorry, this is the 43 plan. I don't have them combined. But yeah, that, that would come down here. I, but I, I think that what we, we would do is we would put together, put our heads together and put together the best way to get from here to there, because I think we'd love to see the...
Pedestrian.
Yeah, the people that are staying here, you know, to use both the restaurant.
Just a quick question about the background. So, so what exactly was contemplated by the trustees at the last site plan?
The trust, what the trustees said was, they, they said, "Look at it."
Look at it.
And they said, "Unless, if, if there's problems with it, then maybe it doesn't make sense." But there was absolutely unequivocally no direct mandate or condition that it happened. And I think that was wise.
And what year was that?
Until, oh, it was a couple of years ago. We're on for August 8th for a hearing. But, you know, until you get into the, the actual design and see how these projects melt, if you had, if the, if the movie theater lot went all the way to the nor, as far north as the hotel lot, eh, maybe then you start thinking about it, but it just doesn't make sense.
Understood.
And interestingly enough, if you drive to the, if you...
There was some times when talk about, there's some open space here on, what is it? I think Hendrick Subdivision, just put pedestrian access, which you can see right there in this image. There was, it was sort of what you were... There was talk about that, and the trustees, because it encourages people to do something that you shouldn't do. They should be on the established roads.
So, but, but back on that point, that was pedestrian access going? They wanted a road between there and, what is that, Cooper's next?
Down to the library.
The library.
Yeah.
And one, one more quick question. I know I'm getting into a different topic, but do either or both of these projects contemplate parking relief or does parking come into play with cross-parking or cross-access?
No, absolutely not. Both, both, neither, neither party is willing to do that. And candidly, I've had a conversation with the village council who understands that it is difficult at best to mandate any sort of cross-cross. And candidly, I've had a conversation with the village council who understands that it is difficult at best to mandate any sort of cross-cross parking. You can, you can, you can try for, for cross-access when it's an appropriate case, but cross-parking has not only planning, but regulatory issues.
But both sites have enough parking.
Yes.
That was, that was the crux of my question, is the cross-access, is, will other things, will the parking calculations be thrown off by closing?
Is that no longer taking advantage of the parking reductions for the, I mean, the buildings?
It is taking-
It is.
It is taking advantage of that.
But does that, does that provision require cross-access? That's what I-
That, I, that was the position of the planning board. I don't see any legislative, I don't see any legislative force behind that. I don't see it. It, it, you don't require, regardless of that, you don't require cross-access when it doesn't make sense. What are you doing? You're not cutting off curb cuts. All you're doing is funneling, you know, sort of bastardizing this drive around outside of established lanes of traffic that are controlled by traffic control devices. You don't wanna encourage this, that's what's gonna happen.
If I could add one thing, the topography plays a big role in this.
Microphone, please.
The topography plays a big role in this. As you go this way to the north, there's probably five to six feet of topography change from this property to this one. At the existing cut, it's just a little under four feet. And over here even, it remains at four feet. What that means is the, the trucks with the trailers going through there are getting stuck. Don't ask me how I know that. I was going real fast at the time. But it's, it's difficult there. Aside from the fact that there's a park here, and there's the end, it's just not a great way to get through the village.
What is at the north end of the theater parking lot?
Right, right here.
On the other side of your hand.
That's right there.
Oh, yeah.
What is, what is there?
The back of the Verizon.
On the back of the Verizon.
Got it, okay.
So under this scenario, what, this is a self-contained loop, you're saying? And that would work for emergency services? How many, how many ingress and egress are there if you were had your separate parking lot for the movie theater?
If we close this off, you would have the, the-
The one with the chain link right now? Is that, is that, yeah.
Yeah, there might be chain link on it sometimes.
Okay, so that's the-
This is the Hill Street entrance, and this is the one that goes down to Windmill Lane.
Yeah, I just, it's important to note that that's, there's nothing, nothing legally establishes that.
Yeah.
What is that, what you're going to do?
Well, this was, this was a, one question. Yeah, they, these kinda marry, I think, very different scales.
So you'd come down, you're heading into the village, you'd make a left into where there's the link chain now or whatever? Where would you, where's the main entrance for the theater?
Uh, here, this is, this is Hill Street, this is the marquee, so-
Okay, so it's behind, it's the next one? Yeah, okay, where it's, and then you go in, and then you, people would go out?
It could go out the same way.
So it's two ways? Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure, like, what was happening at the other end, if there's anything?
Usually what happens, usually what happens is there's, there's sort of an understanding that when the bulk of the traffic is coming in, going north to go to, you see them from all the places, then they, that northerly bound traffic gets the benefit, and then when the movie gets out, it's all the traffic.
Yeah.
And of course, we understand why it's not good for them also, because when movies let out, then you might have a third of the patrons kinda streaming through their parking lot. And the further this is, this direction, the better it is for us. Further, further, it goes this way, it's for them, but it, you know, it becomes, it starts to become a straight shot through here.
So, a couple of things. We really appreciate you guys getting together to discuss this. A lot of applicants use the planning board as a referee, and that's really not in our job description. So, super appreciate the fact that you guys are talking on this and trying to work something out. I also think that we, we do not want to create a backdoor road to cut through. And we all know that that's what people are gonna use. On the other hand, having multiple points of egress to these two large commercial properties, I think is also important. So when the theater lets out, if there's a big event going on at the Southampton Inn, the more directions, different directions cars can go, the less pressure that puts on that, those Hill Street exits. So what, and, and the third point is, we have, well, we appreciate you bringing in this, this plan for the, the hotel. You know, we haven't seen anything on this one. So it's kinda premature, but it's helpful to put everything in context. So what I'd like to propose to the board members is, we, we keep it, we, we heard you, right? You make some good points. I'm not sure I'm completely convinced that closing that cross-access is the only way to stop the backdoor thoroughfare through there. There might be other ways to do that. And still provide multiple points of egress when you need, you, when you have a lot of cars leaving those lots at one time. So I think we'd like to keep an open mind on this, and not really make any decision at this point, and, and further think about it, further study, and see if there, you know, it'd be great if we could come up with a way to stop people going through the backway there, outside of putting armed guards at the entrances. I'm not sure there is, but we gotta give it some thought.
You can't say no right turn coming out of the, out of the hotel section, say something?
And, and the no through traffic signs.
That'll just create a bottleneck going into Joe's Lane.
I mean, the other thing is, right now, this is, there, the two points are very close to each other on Hill Street. So, when Hill, like, when I left here two weeks ago, and I was on Hill Street, it was backed up to here, and it wouldn't have mattered probably if I'd gone there, you know, a hundred feet down the sidewalk to get up.
Well, part of the issue is if you're coming out of the entrance right beside the theater, right? If I'm trying to get out that way, and I want to go east on Hill Street, which is very close to the traffic light there, that's a difficult left turn.
Yeah.
Right? With, with an easier left turn, not, not a traffic expert, I haven't studied this, but with that new little thing that the village put in there, it seems to me it might be somewhat easier to make a left turn on, off of Radian onto Hill Street.
Are you suggesting that we do one-way traffic?
I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying that we need to think about this some more. I'm not ready to say, okay, cross-access is, the door's closed on that one. I think we need to stay open.
That's where one would historically go out this way over here and come down with the window.
Well, that's what I was wondering, where the second, you were talking about the in and out of the same, the same exit or entrance? I was talking about the other one, where's the other?
Yeah.
Is that the other way to get out of the movie theater?
It is.
Okay, and that is open, and that's viable, and that's already there?
Right, so this is-
So I think we need to be more specific, whether you're gonna make that, that driveway on the southeast side of the theater one-way in only, and force all the traffic to come?
We have not talked about that.
Yeah, but, but that's the kinda thing we have to figure out, right? Because I, I agree with you, the cross-access is just an open invitation when you're stuck in traffic to cut through and, and, you know, save the backup at the point there.
Just to throw this all into the mix, I don't know how it works, but you shouldn't be looking at all this stuff at the, I call it the lock, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's a planning, there's a zoning board of appeals variance, and one of the conditions of that variance was to allow access to the west now. The variance actually says, well, I don't know whether or not that happened, but it's a condition that runs with the, like, variance, runs with the land. So I'm just letting you know that, that's, that has been sort of, I don't know whether or not that makes sense or not, I just wanna let this-
So there's a variance that says-
It's the, it's the La Caressa building, and just to the, I guess, to the south of the AT&T building?
Yep.
If you make, you can make a right at the very suddenly end of that building and go up the hill. When that building was first built, there was a zoning board of appeals approval granting a parking variance, and one of the conditions was for access to the parcel to the west.
That would be a good solution, because then it would be another, you can't just all come out on Hill Street, in and out.
But that's, that, yeah. That's there today, right?
Yeah.
You can get, yeah.
It's physically there, physically there. You, I don't, I could be, I, 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 I didn't do a title search, I didn't perform a title search, excuse me, but it is in the condition for the, the parking variance. It's a condition requiring cross-access.
Did you contemplate using that?
So I just, I throw that out there, so you have all the-
John, this is recorded against the SETN for the La Caressa building.
Which one, sorry?
That goes down the hill, past La Caressa. Yeah, so you have two entrances now?
We do, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was getting at.
This is the entrance here.
Right.
That's adjacent to the firehouse.
Okay.
This is where the fire trucks are.
Right, 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 that, yeah, good, okay.
Do you know what date that's from? Does anyone disagree with the direction advocating on this? Okay, so what I'd like to do then is effectively, I'm sorry, there are more comments, please, I apologize.
I'm Sheldon Wordiger, I'm representing the ownership, which is a nonprofit. So it's really, for us, it's all community-based, and we feel like we're in partnership with the village and with what we think is gonna be a great institution. What a thank you for listening to us and, you know, considering, you know, our needs, our neighbors' needs, who have become good friends, and we're trying to do best for both of us. Just wanna say two things. First, I think everyone recognizes the concern that we have, you know, as parents, family members. We have our handicap parking adjacent to those aisles for the parking lot. We have what hopefully will be a family-oriented, open space that's for the community. It's not privately held for us. We are very concerned about public safety, and we wanna increase pedestrian use, we wanna increase the use of bicycles. And the only reason I'm saying this is not in terms of working out the planning, which we all agreed with a lot of effort this past week and today on site, that it just doesn't make sense. And in terms of the intent of the master plan, this isn't to me what the intent was. But what I'm saying, which is more self-serving, is we're trying to open this thing up for, by the end of the year. And we kind of need approvals to keep the momentum going and to get things done. We're raising money for the, the support of the project. We're raising money by, you know, high rollers, and we're also looking to the community, give their five, ten dollars as well. But what we're looking to, and I'm not sure where you're leading in terms of concerning the study, the traffic vehicular aspect of it, is if we can get, if we can close the hearing on allowing us to do the exterior work of our building, and if it requires any more studies on the vehicular traffic and, and the site planning, to somehow separate the two, rather than having a cross-access, another issue, you know, affect us delaying, and which both delays us from opening to the public, but also costs us more money with each day we delay.
We're, we're exactly on the same page. So what I was going to propose is a motion to direct our attorney to draft a resolution approving your site plan. We're gonna leave the issue of cross-access open. And I think we have to, and you can correct me on the, on the right legal way to, to say this, but the cross-access issue, I would like to consider when we know what's going on with both sites and come to a conclusion there, to make sure that we're making a decision in the context of knowing what's happening between Meeting House Lane and Varadian Way. It's all done, dot all our i's, cross all our t's, we've considered all the different angles, access points and issues, and, and decide the cross-access at that point. Is it possible to draft the resolution that way?
What we can do, and what I've seen in the past, I've seen language, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think, I don't know why I have a mental block against this, was there anything ever recorded against either pro, recorded? And anything that the planning board said about contemplating future cross-access or the board of trustees?
The board of trustees said, "Take a look at it." If, if I may, I, I, I don't have any problem, I mean, there's also a couple of benefits to our project, including eight years of affordable housing, so let's not forget that, which is, but I don't have any problem closing the hearing and letting these folks get on their way. I just wanna make sure that it doesn't in any way curtail our ability to, in full comment, and be part of the cross-access.
Absolutely, we're not gonna close the hearing on this either. We'll close the hearing after we've seen a draft.
So the board remembers, once we close the public hearing on a site plan under the village code, we have forty-five days to pass our resolution. So that's the, the sense of urgency.
If I may, as a, I'm a municipal lawyer, there's, there's nothing prohibiting keeping the, keeping them some finality as it lets them get on their way, but keeping, understanding that the board is not deciding the cross-access issue. As long as we have the ability, both parties have the full ability to, to weigh in and be heard.
Yes, we're not closing that off. So what we'll do is, I'll make a motion in a second, we'll direct John to draft a resolution approving your site plan, so you can get going.
For fifty-one as well.
For both.
Thank you.
For both, so you can get going on that at our next scheduled meeting. We'll have, and your attorneys, everyone will have had a chance to review that resolution, and we'll have the official vote. We'll close the hearing at that point, and then have the official vote at our next meeting. Okay? So?
Sounds reasonable, thank you.
Everybody happy?
Very much so, thank you.
You guys are, and on this cross, on this cross-access, you know, we got, it needs some more discussion. It needs some more thinking. I'm gonna make my motion right now. A motion to direct Mr. Borkland to draft a resolution approving the site plan for both fifty-one and forty-three Hill Street. Second?
But you have to, if you may, be specific.
No, go, please, go.
Yeah, please, specific with respect to like-
I just don't think it's appropriate if you're gonna do that. I'm not trying to keep these fine people who's very, you know, public benefit being, being on their way, but I, it can have no effect on this cross-access issue.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I partic, I don't particularly either. So, what, what both applicants would be comfortable with, stop me if I'm wrong, is an approval of the site plan with no mention of cross-access. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Which, that's not what I'm saying.
That's not what we're understanding.
That's not what I'm saying.
All right, so that's-
I'm saying, cross-access is TPD, to be, to be determined, right? Appreciate, and we, you know, you guys have been great in coming back, and we want you to get moving on this, but if we, we need to solve the cross-access issue, we're gonna be delayed longer. So in effect, I'd like to just kick the cross-access issue down the-
Whether or not we need it at all, or if we do, where it might be, but everybody can still work together.
Correct, correct. So we're reserving our right to require cross-access, and that will be referenced in this draft resolution?
We could do that, we could do that. I mean, I caution though that by not making a decision, we are kind of making a decision. But is the board want something along the lines of just kind of open-ended language encouraging cross-access easement or requiring it at a later date if a subsequent site plan comes in?
I would object to that to the extent that leaves it open on, on our site plan. That's a real problem. I, I think we should grapple with it and get it done. It's really not that difficult.
Yeah, no, we're not gonna do that, but I appreciate your input on that one.
I just, I just had a question with respect to, two years ago, someone, the traffic people opined on this. So much has changed in two years, and traffic is so much worse. Isn't it, is there some government agency this needs to go to now to just, you know, so we can get, or Kathy, is that in your purview to sort of do an assessment of the traffic now, and we can just move this ahead quickly?
All right, so for the, the, for seventy-one Hill Street, in the past, they, there was a requirement for cross-access written into the code to get the sixty percent of the required parking. And that was aimed at everything in the village business district, and because they are in the village business district, they're part of that.
What was the date of that?
That was, when was that co-change? Goes back a number of years. Oh, you mean seventy-one Hill Street, a couple of years ago?
Three years ago.
So, so-
I think twenty-twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, but that was because of the nature of shared businesses in the village business district. This is a little different, so I do, I concede their point here. So, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
To your question, the, the trustees who have the authority for that, have done traffic studies of, of Hill Street. They've also hired consultants to review this application, who have looked at those studies as part of the review of that application and the proposal. And then, any new versions of that will also be reviewed by those consultants before it's heard by the trustees.
It might help ease traffic, but we're all concerned that it's gonna be detrimental to public safety.
We hear you. We hear you. We don't disagree. We're just, yeah, we understand that.
I, I don't think we have enough information or fully fleshed out plan. We haven't even seen a site plan for next door yet to, to make a decision.
For years. It's almost like a reflex action that planners have cross access, cross access. That always makes so. No, 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 I'm not talking, I am not talking about the fine people here. Not talking about the fine people. I think it's absolutely fantastic that you're actually digging into a situation where it doesn't, to my point of view, make sense and listening to our arguments on it. And I, I'm very appreciative of that. Very appreciative.
So, um, do I need to repeat the motion to get a second or did everybody get it the first time?
Only if, have the conditions changed, is the board's, is the board willing to go ahead without any mention of cross access? Or is the board still wanting to go ahead with something along the lines of a future cross access?
We need your legal advice on this one because we're, we're not prepared to say one way or the other, yes or no. So what is the best approach with respect to the topic of cross access?
What I have seen done at least one, what I, what I have seen done in the past is a future cross access agreement between, between two properties.
But that's assuming there is one.
We're not going to do that.
But that, that's, I think, too deep, you know, that's jumping in too far at this point, right? Uh, we're talking about vehicle cross access. Do we mention it? Is it best to, to preserve the ability to, to, to preserve a hundred percent flexibility for the board? Is it better to mention vehicular cross access in the resolution or not?
If the board wants the vehicular cross access easement, we should mention it. But if the board is, if, if the idea that the board wants is at some future point, they, that they might want to come back at a separate site plan years down the line and we want to reserve our right to ask for that, that's where a future cross access clause could be used.
I'm not talking about kicking it that far down the road. I'm talking about making a de- decision when we have all the facts on both the Southampton Inn expansion, um, I think we have all the facts.
So that's what would be a future cross access agreement.
It's, you know, when Southampton Inn comes in front of us and we've had a chance to look at all the, uh, possible iterations of the traffic flow here.
Well, that, that's gonna be an issue. As our position is, is not appropriate. So we would, I hate to say this, but we would possibly challenge the attempt to report cross access on this site, uh, now.
A chip prerogative.
No, no, I know, but I, I, I don't, I don't want to, uh, I don't, you know, there's a pending, there's a, there, there is a pending lawsuit in the state Supreme Court on this very property about not only the constitutionality of, but the appropriateness of the cross access. I was hoping to make that go away.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I didn't come in here saying I want it to go away just because I want it to go away. I realized that we have to come in here with strong arguments as to why. In this particular scenario, this.
I understand that. Um, we're not ready to put this cross access issue to bed yet, but we do wanna move your application ahead. So draft a resolution, if, once the motion, uh, is voted on here, if you would draft a resolution, we'll circulate it and, uh, everybody can, uh, take a look at it and comment it at our next meeting. Is there a second for that approach? Second? All in favor? Donny? Aye. Okay. Yeah, we wanna figure this out, John. We just, you know, we, we need to get all the facts and, um, this is the first we've seen at, or heard officially of any Southampton Inn.
Well, it's been a good, but this is.
Yeah, but not in front of this group.
Not this sitting board.
Yeah. This is all new to us. Yeah. Yeah. I didn't speak. Yeah, next on the agenda. No, uh, yeah, thanks. Um, we're good, okay? Next on the agenda is, uh, thirty-six Windmill Lane. It's here. Mr. Benz. Thank you very much.
Do you want me to reiterate everything?
But, um, I, you know, I think we can cut to the chase here, right? Cause we know, um, what, are there any questions on?
Let Lisa say why she's here, for the record. Yeah, just give us a little recap and we'll get this officially on the record.
Okay. For the record, Lisa Saloga, I'm the architect for thirty-six Windmill Lane, which is Shippey's Restaurant. Um, we have, uh, been working with you guys to create, uh, an addition to the south and the east of the existing two-story building. It's a two-story, partial two-story, partial one-story building. Um, the primary goal is to housing, uh, the new and, uh, increased number of bathrooms for the, for the restaurant, as well as to increase the kitchen, uh, facilities and, and have a better flow and a better access so that they can, uh, get the food out to the restaurant and the, the patrons without having to kind of jump through the bar area. Um, we've been in front of the architectural review board and been granted approval. We've been in front of the zoning board of appeals and been granted approval. And we are hoping to get you guys to grant approval tonight.
Okay. Uh, any questions from anyone on this one? No. Um, look, I think, uh, we're supportive of this. One high priority of this board has been to, um, clean, cleanup's the wrong word, but to, um, reinvigorate the area behind all the businesses along Windmill Lane, starting with Shippey's going south, right? And I think it's on our radar screen to the extent that we can encourage, um, a, a regentrification of those areas back there, that, you know, we're gonna pursue that goal to the best of our ability. And, um, the impact that it would have on, um, on thirty-six Windmill Lane, uh, would be, you know, a question of what's going on with the garage and what's your plan with the garage there. And I think that we're willing to move forward on a site plan approval tonight for what is in front of us. But I, um, I'm all about no surprises, um, in the future and, you know, get everything out on the table, uh, so that, you know, you understand where we're coming from and we understand where you're coming from so that we can work together to come up with the best possible solution for, uh, everybody, including the village. And, and I think that, um, it will, uh, and I, I'm about to make a motion to approve the site plan. But I think that before we go, you've come to us and said, you know, stage one, stage two, stage three. I think when we go to the next stage, um, we'll be very interested in what you're planning on doing with that garage and how it's going to fit into, um, our overall vision of, uh, improving that whole area back behind you all and rotations and, uh, get everything over there. So just, just wanted to go on the record and let you know what we're thinking on that one. Okay?
That's great. So I knew you mentioned that before. Can you give me an idea what you're, what you, you mentioned retail space before or, or taking it down? What were you?
Uh, look, we're not designers here, right? You, you've gotta come up with what you think will look, you know, in, in the context of, of what's gonna help, help. And I know you're talking to the rotations people and I think, you know, um, I'm not telling you what to do here, but I think if I were in your shoes, I'd be talking to the rotations guys. I'd be talking to the, the.
We've been talking to everybody.
Yeah, and that's great.
And the reason we haven't brought it up to you.
Yeah.
It's cause it's really part of the next phase.
Exactly, and, and.
And we've got the septic, the easement. There's a, it's, it's a, it's a pretty complex project. But I know what your, your objectives are and I think we're in alignment with those.
So we're just trying to strongly encourage everybody along there to communicate and work together and come up with a plan that, that, you know, the planning board can get behind, the village can get behind, that, you know, what doesn't look that great right now and what could, um, I think in working with the village, you know, some really interesting, different approaches to all that property back there with parking and stuff could, you know, come to us with your ideas and what you guys are thinking.
Sure, sure.
Right? Does that make sense to everybody?
I think they mentioned a takeout window and all that. Is that what you're talking about? That area down back there even further?
I'm not talking any specifics now. It's just, you know, but right now, I think you've, personally, and I'm speaking personally, what you've done to the Shippeys beautiful, right? When I drive down that road, you know, at the north end, looks great. The garage doesn't look so great.
Is the garage in the same tax lot as, as the principal building?
Right? So what, you know, every time I drive by there, it's like, well, maybe someday that garage will look as good as Shippey's.
If I might, if I might. The length of time it takes to go through these processes here, you know, I know what I wanna do.
Right.
And I think the existing Shippeys is what I wanna take through that whole area.
Yeah.
So my standards are pretty high.
Yeah.
I think they're in alignment with what the vision of the village is. And so I've heard you several times on the garage. I appreciate the feedback and I share the same concern. How do we, how do we integrate it and all that kind of thing?
And we're not picking on you, uh, at all, cause I mean, I think the same could be said for what's behind rotations and what's, you know, what is or is or is not behind that empty building that they're looking to develop. So it, we just wanted you not to be surprised that the next time you're looking for a site plan approval for the next phase of this, that's what we'd expect to see.
A little bit more about the garage. I mean, is it, do you want it down? Do you want us to remodel it? I mean, integrate it into the facility, right? I would think.
Your, you all and your team are, are the best people to come up with a plan there, right? And you should, we shouldn't be guiding you, in my view, towards anything, cause you know what you wanna do. You're the expert. Come up with a plan. We're happy if you wanna just come in here and bounce things off of us, right?
Like we did before.
Um, you know, we'll always take the time to do that and, you know, give you guidance, but we're, you know, I'm, we're not gonna sit up here and say, oh, it's gotta look like this or that. You gotta take it down.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. But, but of course, we're gonna take that into consideration.
Is that, everybody okay with that approach, right? Fair? So I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve the site plan, um, or direct you to draft a resolution to approve the site plan, which we will do at our next meeting. It's the same thing. We'll close the, the, the public hearing's still open on this, right? So we'll leave the public hearing open. We'll close that at the beginning of the next meeting. And, um, the resolution will have, uh, been drafted in, circulated between now and our next meeting and we'll, just like we did with the Fowlers at the beginning, have a very quick vote on this, um, motion, the second. Second, pardon?
What's the next meeting day?
August second or third, I think.
Fifth. Fifth? August fifth.
August fifth.
So is there a second for that motion? August second. Yep. Amanda, thank you. All in favor? Second, aye. Uh, aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, uh, before I do that, I'd just like to take a straw poll. Everybody's on board for this site plan, correct? Raise your hand if you're on board for this site plan. Yeah, okay. Just wanna make sure.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve our minutes of June third, which I think are the only ones that, uh, are out there that we have not approved. Second, please. Second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Right? Um, is there anything else? Anyone? I think we, Alex.
So I just wanted to make a note, um, the subdivision review for Conamara at fifty-two First Nick Lane, that's been adjourned to September sixteenth. Uh, but I believe there's three applications for site plan review, um, where we have no new submissions that I think the board should probably make motions to adjourn, uh, to their, their next meeting. That's eight sixty-five Merrick Holdings at twenty-two, uh, Windmill Lane, which is currently in front of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, Brian Kelly at twenty-thirty County Road thirty-nine A, which is currently in the process of applying, uh, to the board of appeals and is likely scheduled for their next meeting. Uh, and seventy-four White Street LLC, uh, which has gone to the board of zoning appeals and they believe is working through, um, their health department approvals.
Okay, uh, motion to, um, push these, all three of these site plan reviews, eight sixty-five Merrick, twenty-thirty County Road thirty-nine A and seventy-four White Street to our next meeting. Second, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, Alex, we're good? Anything else?
Um, yes, we have the, uh, minutes for June seventeenth on the agenda, but I believe those are not ready yet. Okay, so we'll, we'll address those at the time of the next meeting. So then our next, uh, two meetings are scheduled for August fifth and August nineteenth.
Okay.
Um, so if any of the board members know they won't be here, to please let the chair know to make sure that we'll have a quorum for those two dates.
Okay. Um, motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor? Uh, before we, um, step away, I have a few, so the meeting's over, but I do wanna say a couple.